Good evening, residents of Everett, Washington. I'd like to call to order the Everett City Council meeting of September 27th, 2023. The city council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Public Meetings Act. Community members are welcome to join either in person, remote, on Zoom, or by calling in. For those who wish to participate in the future on Zoom, you'll find the instructions to register for public comment on the City of Everett website under the City Council Department. Please note, we do not allow comments on any kind of campaigning, whether for or against ballot measures or candidates running for office. We also do not accept comments focused on personal matters that are unrelated to city business. Clerk, will you please call the roll this evening?
Mayor Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Zarlingo?
Here.
Councilmember Vogely?
Here.
Councilmember Fossey?
Here.
Vice President Tuie?
Here.
Vice -- Councilmember Schwab?
Here.
Councilmember Ryan?
Here.
President Stonecifer?
Here. I'd like to ask Councilmember Ryan, would you please lead us in the flag salute?
Yes, please stand if you're able. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Vice President Tuie, would you please read the land acknowledgements?
Yes. The city council wishes to acknowledge the original inhabitants of this place, the Stahushie people and their successors, the Talalip tribes. Since time immemorial, they have hunted, fished, gathered on, and taken care of these lands and waters. We respect their sovereignty, their right to self-determination, and honor their sacred spiritual connection with the land and water. We will strive to be honest about our past mistakes and bring about a future that includes their people, stories, and voices to form a more just and equitable society.
Thank you. And now we will move to take action on our minutes. We have two minutes to approve. We'll take them one at a time. So I'll first ask for approval of the minutes of the September 13th meeting.
Councilmember Ryan moves approval.
Second. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmembers Zarlingo?
Abstain.
Councilmember Vogely?
I think I abstain on that one.
Councilmember Fossey?
Abstain.
Vice President Tuie?
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab?
Abstain.
Councilmember Ryan?
Was I there?
You were there.
Okay. There's so many dates.
I know.
Let's be honest, gangs and drugs are the city's biggest issues. It's shameful to use this tragedy to support your gun violence agenda. Let's be very clear, you can remove all the guns and you will still have gang violence. So rather than more rhetoric, let's see action addressing youth and gang violence. The balanced budget the mayor proudly proposed is propped up with one-time funding. It does nothing to address the gang violence in our city and is another unsustainable budget. After the one-time funding and grants run out, what then happens to all the new positions you've created? These positions you say are essential. How have you survived without them? You keep robbing Peter to pay Paul and you know eventually this will lead to another round of either massive layoffs unless the plan for your levy lid lift to raise the tax ceiling at least 50% higher is successful, which it won't be. I guess that's one way to stunt the growth of the city. It's time you begin real discussions to annex into the RFA for fire services. Yes, it may cost more, but taxpayers will have direct representation for their services and taxes. Be honest, this would mean we don't need a levy lid lift and in fact would allow you to lower the city's property tax collection. I urge you to scrutinize the need for the reclassifications and proposed positions and don't delay the RFA negotiations any longer. Thank you and Chief Templeman, thank you for your service.
Good morning.
So we'll move on to people in chambers. Apologies, I'm not sure how to pronounce the first name, but Velasco.
For those who are speaking in chambers, let me just remind you that we have a timing system at the podium so you can monitor when we start your timer, the light will be green. When you have 30 seconds left, it will turn yellow and then at three minutes it will beep and turn red.
Thank you.
And if you could please state your full name and city residence.
My name is Fidencio Velasco, Special Representative with the Southwest Mountain State's Carpenters. I'm a resident of Everett District One. Good evening Mayor Franklin and Everett City Council. First and foremost, I want to thank you for the opportunity to serve the city of Everett and participating as a member of the PLA Task Force. I believe that a PLA has three basic points. One, it's efficient. Two, it's inclusive. And three, it's collaborative. A PLA promotes streamlined project management and coordination, minimizing conflicts and delays. This leads to improved productivity, on-time completion, and cost effectiveness, ultimately benefiting the taxpayers of Everett and stakeholders. A PLA also ensures fair wages, something that I've talked to many of you about, benefits and working conditions for workers. It takes workers on non-PLA projects or without a collective bargaining agreement years to collect unpaid wages. It supports apprenticeship programs, skills development, and safety standards, creating a skilled and highly trained workforce. This promotes workers' well-being, job satisfaction, overall quality of construction projects. And the biggest one, it creates economic growth and local opportunities for citizens of Everett. A PLA encourages hiring locally and supports small businesses, injecting economic growth in the communities by prioritizing local labor. PLAs generate job opportunities and stimulate the local economy. They also promote workforce diversity and equal opportunities for underrepresented groups, fostering a more inclusive and equitable society. That is why tonight, the Southwest Mountain State's Carpenters, along with myself, can support the draft proposal and its proposed version. I do look forward to what the community of Everett and a total representation of labor will be able to come up with. Thank you.
Please refrain from clapping, thank you.
Next, if Ethan could please come to the podium. Please state your full name and city of residence and give your missus speak.
Ethan Fall, I live in Granite Falls, but spend most of my time here in the city of Everett. So good evening council members and mayor. I represent approximately 1,500 members, proud members of Labor's Local 292. 1,028 of those members reside in Snohomish County and another 166 within your city limits. We've been talking about PLA language for quite some time, so I appreciate your comments earlier. Hopefully, this is the last time we talk about it. So going forward, we need strong apprenticeship language. We need to train the workforce. PLAs help train the workforce. They help provide strong, good-paying, not just jobs, careers. I've been doing it for over 12 years now and many of our members have been going on 30, 30 years, 50 years strong. So good jobs are, good careers come from PLAs. With that being said, apprenticeship language, we need to go for 15% at the 1 million threshold. We need to mirror responsible bidder language from Snohomish County. Wage theft, PLAs prevent wage theft. I did a sound transit PLA in Seattle at the UW Link. There was, I was an apprentice and it gave me the opportunity to keep working because they had an apprenticeship utilization requirement. I stand here today, look back during those years and I wonder, would I have even completed my apprenticeship program if I didn't work that job? Back to wage theft, you have companies on another sound transit project, which isn't covered by PLA, that have had $180,000 in wage theft for workers. Our compliance officers at La Union of the Laborers fought for those non-union workers and we're still fighting to get them that stolen money. Can't go into a bank and rob a bank for 180 grand without repercussions, so why can companies do that too? They need to be held accountable for what they've done. PLAs prevent that. So you kind of, your comments threw mine off, but that's all good. So with that being said, you know, we need to sit down, labor as a whole, leadership of Everett, including the mayor's office and staff, and come up with strong language to represent PLAs, your community members, the people that visit your community, and the people that build your community. Thank you. Congrats. Honor of time.
Next, if Brian could please come to the podium. Please state your full name and city residence.
Brian Johnson, I live in Snohomish, Washington. Mayor, council, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. My name is Brian Johnson. I am president and business agent of Local 86 Ironworkers. The city of Everett's proposed PLA ordinance has many flaws, many of which have been pointed out already, and there's one flaw in particular that sticks out to me. The city's reference to RCW 39.04 in regards to apprenticeship utilization, in RCW 39.04 you will find the definition of an apprentice in 3904-310. Apprentice means an apprentice enrolled in a state-approved apprenticeship program. And I want to point out that the city's recognition of the apprenticeship standards as detailed in Section 1B of the proposed ordinance and also the city's willful disregard of what the language's true intent is. In Section, in Section 1B subsections 1 and 2 conflict with Section 1F subsection 8 paragraph II. If you are not an apprentice registered with an approved and registered apprenticeship by the state of Washington, you are not an apprentice in the state of Washington. If you are not an apprentice in the state of Washington and working on a public project, you shall be paid at the prevailed rate due to the state of Washington only recognizing classifications apprentice and journeyman. Furthermore on the subject, if I was reading it correctly, the city is proposing in this section that they will determine if an open shop training program is substantially equivalent to state-approved and registered programs. Kind of seems like a slippery slope considering the city of Everett is not the Washington State Apprenticeship and Training Council and has no authority to do so. Once again, thank you for your, for the ability and opportunity to speak tonight. And that is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. And if Sam could please come to the podium. Please state your full name and city residence.
Yes, I will. Good evening, Mayor, city council members. My name is Sam Hemm. I live in District One in the city of Everett. But before I speak to you. Chief Dan, my family loves you and adores you and appreciates you and we celebrate the fact that you get retired. It sucks for us, but we're happy for you. So thank you. A lot of the people that spoke before me tonight talked about all the things that I wanted to talk about, so I don't want to be the broken record. I reviewed the document as well. I sent the letter in today. Thank you so much for receiving it and putting it in the record. I did have some questions that were raised, that I had, that I didn't include in the letter, so I'd like to read some of those questions now. I'm not asking for answers, I just like them in the record. So who in the city would administer the PLA? Because it talks about the city actually administering the PLA. That's a lot of work. The city of Seattle does it. A lot of other organizations, however, sub that work out to a third-party administrator. So I'm just curious if you've thought about what that impact of self-administering the PLA would be? And then who in the city would approve the projects? Did the city reach out to any subject matter experts, maybe third-party administrators that, that do this work to get some technical advice and some expertise on, on the recommendations that the subcommittee created? I would like to know who the, who was asked. I would also like to know what advice was given from those subject matter experts? Did the subcommittee decide to follow those recommendations? And if not, what was the rationale behind that? I'm not sure what substantial number of contractors means, and I don't know what substantial project costs are in this, in the ordinance view. So I'd, I'd like that to be addressed.
Just the word substantial?
Yeah, just, I'm trying to figure out and quantify what substantial means. Everybody has their own view a minute. Okay. How did the subcommittee decide on a $7 million threshold from the 5 million? What criteria did they look at? Who determined that the threshold should change four times a year for all three categories? And what are the benefits of the threshold changing four times a year? What are appropriate unions? It seems, I think we're all appropriate, but I'm just curious if some are inappropriate. And then, can you tell us? And then, the, the final question for tonight is what apprenticeship policies does the city of Everett follow that may differ from RCW 3004? Because I, I had that same thought that was previously spoken, that if the city is, is determining something that they may alter from the state, that's very risky for the city. So with that, thank you for my time.
President Stone, same for that concludes our public comments.
Thank you. Thank you to the speakers. And we're going to go to council liaison reports and comments, and I'm going to go out of order so that council member Tui and Schwab, who worked on the PLA Task Force, can speak first. Ladies first, I'll start with Council Vice President Tui.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody who came tonight and those that spoke. You brought up a lot of great questions and I really appreciate that. And I personally want to thank the six committee members from labor and the construction industry for all their time and, and efforts that they put into the process so far. The meetings, I learned a lot from those meetings and they spent a lot of time on that. I did request that the draft be brought back to the committee for review so that we can see what concerns were not met and can we meet them? And if they weren't met, why were they not met? So I was disappointed that that didn't happen with the committee. I think that's an important part of working together on a project to come up with something that all the stakeholders can feel good about and vested at the end. So I feel that's a very important part. And moving forward, I hope that we get the stakeholders back in so that we can come up with a PLA that will work for all of us. So I thank the mayor for taking it off the agenda for tonight because it, as far as I'm concerned, it has quite a bit of work left to do with the help of, of our stakeholders. So thank you so much for being here and appreciate it all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Schwab.
Thank you. So when the project labor agreement was vetoed, the mayor formed this task force. The task force met several times and there was a list of needs or points of discussion that the task force came up and it took way too long. The process was very frustrating. I know it went over summer, but I really think that it could have been managed differently. And I take some responsibility for that because I'm part of the committee, but I just wanted to share that. Once these points or bulletins or notes were developed, council member Judy Tui and I asked that we, since we spent all this time in this task force, that, that there be an ordinance written to reflect. When that ordinance came back, it did not meet the needs of the labor force and quite frankly, it needed a lot more work. And so I am thankful that the mayor heard our concerns and agreed to pull the ordinance. So I'm very disappointed to report that two processes for developing PLAs in the city has failed. And one, the council members forward, and then also this task force. And I too have to take some responsibility for this, but this takes a team. However, I don't want this, this to end. I think this is such an important issue that we need to go forward and it's time to set up, it's time to set up a new process and show, so, show some leadership, mostly from this group, but also from, from all of us here. Mayor, I know and I appreciate, I've just been a great big supporter of yours, and I know that you're looking after many interests and the interests of the community, and I really appreciate that. But this PLA is in the best interest of our community and our workforce. And it, there is a sense of reality that you did veto the PLA. I was hoping that this task force could come up with something that was workable. And it, that just didn't happen. So I, I just ask you personally and publicly to please show, I mean, a lot of it's in your hands and I know you're very capable to come up with a new, new way that we can relook at this and come up with something that will work for both parties. And also, I'll just publicly address your staff too. They're very capable. I ask that your staff invest, I know they were invested some time, but maybe relook at a way in supporting you in coming up with some different ways and a way that we can create a PLA that works. There's a lot of smart, resourceful people even in this room. There's a lot of capabilities here, so I think it's just time to take a different approach. And let's work together and get something done. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll go on to other council comments and liaison reports. I'm going to start with Councilmembers Arlingo.
Thank you. First, I'd like to thank those, most of those who made comments at our public session tonight. I appreciate the additional input. I've read all of the comments emailed and I look forward to receiving more of those by email as well and listening to more of those in the weeks to come. Labor development in our community is really, really important. Before I get on to a couple of other quick things, I won't be as eloquent as others were or will be in thanking Chief Templeman, but he knows how I feel. Thank you again. With respect to labor interests, because this is, I mean, I've done a lot of different things in my life from very, very high-tech stuff to the simplest, most green construction laborer. And so I, I think I understand some of that spectrum and I'm a real enthusiast for developing labor skills and talent. And the job and career training resources are a couple that I can, that I'm gratified to be able to describe that are in our community that maybe some of, some don't know about. In terms of extended career, Everett Community College's Cascade Learning Resource Center grand opening is going to be tomorrow, September 28th. That's a real resource for us here in Everett. If you don't intend to do a four-year college, you have some real opportunities in Everett and that's expanding, that's their newest building. Boeing is about to celebrate their 1,000th hire from the Core Plus Aerospace Program. It's a two-year high school advanced manufacturing curriculum, preparing students for high-demand jobs through hands-on learning. So these are jobs that are great stepping stones to careers, lengthy careers, well-paying, keeping people in the region. I really, really happy to see that. And it gives, this program gives them an advantage to, in applying for apprenticeships, post-high school certificates and college degrees. So again, more than 1,000 people now with that, with that program. Of course, many of you are familiar with the Snowwell Tech Skills Center. Been there a couple of times. Wes and the team there are doing great work. We need all of this because we need, we need skills in this community. We'll develop them a number of different ways. I look forward to hearing more about PLAs because that and the apprenticeships that go along with it are, are an important element of that. And as someone who did laboring without the apprentice mentoring ship, mentoring capabilities or mentorship, I know how that can go slowly if you don't have the right kind of supervision and mentors. And then the last job-related thing in skills is some, the new nonprofit in our community called the Delta Garage. It's a place where high school-aged youth, especially from low-income households, especially in North Everett, are being provided with opportunities, resources, and support necessary for the mechanical trades. So those are the people who design, use tools and machinery, and I won't go into detail on the, on all those possible things, but this new nonprofit is providing some career-focused mentorship, fostering skill development, and providing some introduction to employment and a transition to adulthood. So this isn't only about those skills, it's about learning something that helps you see the value in your own efforts and the growth path for you in those skills. And especially important, helping breaking the cycles of poverty in our community, especially in the north end where we have a disadvantaged community. And today I spent some time on the phone with the founder, Luke Emerson. Learned about their weekly gatherings in a church parking lot that offers community members the chance to use tools and work on motorcycles as a way to get experience. Someone who spent, I spent a lot of my youth riding and working on motorcycles and other machinery, and I think this is a great way to reach out to young people and show them a productive and prosperous way forward. So if you're interested in any of that, see deltagarage.org and hopefully you'll join me sometime soon on a Sunday afternoon, 1 to 4, at a church parking lot there in North Everett and get a chance to meet these kids and see them wrench on the bikes. One other thing I did want to bring up that I've paid particular attention to is the recent announcement, just yesterday I think it was, the closure of a couple of Target stores in Seattle. It's bringing up the need, I think for us as a council, to look at what we can do to take action on organized retail theft. Now, I'm not really, want to make sure that I'm, that it's clear that I'm not talking about casual or impulsive or what some might call subsistence theft, but organized large-scale theft, crime for profit that's meant to feed the black market sellers and other outlets like street vendors, eBay, Facebook Marketplace, Craigslist, and so on. And I'm paying particular attention to this because the closure or even reduced hours and staffing of these stores in our community would impact some of our population that have the fewest resources and the most vulnerable. I mean, most of us, if our local grocery store closes down, we can drive to a new one. And if the prices are higher there, we can pay those prices, painful as it might be. But we have community members who just can't do that. And I am particularly alert to the, to the potential closure of stores, these models of what's happened in Seattle or something I, I don't want to follow. And also, on the way to those ugly outcomes, the rise of brazen organized retail theft seems to create a threat to store staff, another reason that those stores have been closed. And also the perception by shoppers that the store environment isn't safe. Those undermine the businesses that support our community. So I'm going to be looking and hopefully working with other council members. There are targeted measures that are being, that are being tried in other parts of the country and other communities. And hopefully we can focus on this kind of organized retail theft and some of the behavior around it. And I know the mayor, with some of her directives and designations in certain areas, has done what she can do, given the current structure, in terms of protecting these, these stores and outlets. So there may be more that we need to do to support that. And that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Franklin. Did you want to respond on that?
Yeah, just a quick response. Our, our police department is actually doing quite a bit of work on retail theft and it might just be beneficial for us to schedule a briefing to the Public Safety Committee on the work that they're doing because they've identified this as an, an area that needs some focus and we've done a number of operations that have been very beneficial to some of our local stores and we probably just need to brief you and get you up to speed. So we'll, we'll work with you to schedule that.
That sounds great. Thank you. Councilmember Oakley.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you Jeremy Olson and Chip Fidencio, Ethan, Brian, and Jerem, oh wait, already said Jeremy and Sam, for speaking to the PLA. I just have a little bit of something that is probably annoying, but it has to do with grammar when it does come back. And yeah, I could share this via an email, but I, it's just, ah, there's little arrows in sections. And I noticed that Brian mentioned going to Section 1A, something, something. Just notice in there, if there's arrows, it's hard to pinpoint exactly where there is a piece that either jives or does not. So English, probably 99, but I'll show you totally because it's, it's got arrows and not II's and A's and Bs and whatnot. And, okay. And somebody also mentioned, I think, who worked on this? And my question about the who worked on it is about the professional services agreement with the two companies or individuals, Nancy Locke and Intelligent Partnerships. I noticed that it wasn't stated that they were a part of it on the cover sheet. So I don't know if they should have been or not. And then, so I don't need an answer right now, but I know that they worked on it. And I'm curious, and this is a question for Suzie, I don't know if she's here and she doesn't have to answer it right now anyways. Where is it found, like in all of our documents, for how much is paid for professional, a professional services agreement? I know I asked it sort of a minute ago, by a minute, I mean a couple of weeks. And on those professional services agreements, it has the maximum that a entity can be paid, but it also has like the hourly wages and whatnot. And so where do we find how much was actually paid for a service? Like how much the check was written for? I'm not sure if it's in the general ledger that we get every year. I know that's not like taken very small and individual, but it's in the budget, you know? You get $40,000 for PSAs. So that just, that happens in more than just this scenario of PLA discussions. So that's a general question. You want to talk? Do you want to talk? Okay. That's fine, I'm just reading your face. And thank you again for everybody that came by and I hope that the, moving forward on the PLA stuff gets some more involvement and some more benefits to it. Okay. Moving on from that, I was also at the Alliance for Housing Affordability meeting today and I sent around to all of the council members, let me see what I sent. Thank you. Sale prices in Everett for single-family homes and rents and this and that. And I've also sent, and I gave it to the clerk as well, for Everett-specific prices. And I really want to encourage us to get Chris Collier from Pasco slash Alliance for Housing Affordability to come and not just explain what all of this means, but he has a wealth of knowledge and I know that planning, they were there too, like Becky McCrory was there and I met our new person that's three days. And I met our new person that's three days on the job, and now I've forgotten his name. Maybe it's Jeremy, but I can't remember. Anyways, bring him in, Chris Collier, to talk about that. And so yes, I also sent you an email with some exciting reading about housing and whatnot, so that I don't have to, like, take up all your time talking about it. But I wanted to make sure that you knew that was there, and I encourage you to read it. And it's not 25 pages, like it says. It's just four plus one. And coming soon, but I don't have it on there still considering AHA. Darrington has decided, has been voted in to come into the fold for AHA. And because of that and how the ILA is written, under a local agreement, the whole ILA has to come back to every single council that's already on and be re-signed. So that's going to hopefully come back and be on a consent agenda, and I'll let you know about it. But it will also have written, like, we are not going to have to do this again with somebody else, if another city decides to join. So this will be the last time for that type of ILA re-saying yes to. Okay, and then, I know that our fireworks display is going to be repaid. So I'm just wondering when we get to know about that? Or is it just, like, going over, like, have they repaid us? Is it, how does that work in the budget, also probably a Suzie question? And while it's not, like, a million dollars, it's still some cash that could be utilized. And considering last week, we increased job titles and this and that, I am curious if we're still, do we still have a deputy mayor? Are they still working? And, yeah, I mean, I know it's touchy, but I, I don't know. And so if, if there, if we still have that position, I know it's a executive director position. I've seen, like, Jennifer Gregerson has been here a lot, as Lori has. And so I'm wondering if they're, anyways, I'm just, it's a curious, how, how are we doing there? And I think, oh! Chief Templeman, thank you so much. And you said your last day was October 31st, but you didn't say the year. So can you let us know if it's actually next month or if it's in a couple of years from now? Okay, fine. So it's, okay, so 2023, October 31st. It's been a real blessing being able to know you as a chief from before these days and these days. So, thank you. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fossey.
Thanks. Did you want them to answer any of your questions?
They will answer them, I'm sure. Jennifer, thank you. No, but you're really good at getting those answers, like, the next time, and since I didn't pre-plan, I don't expect them answered right now.
All right.
Thank you.
I just saw a lot of my colleagues over at the Municipal District Court Association as we got a really interesting presentation on some changes and things that they needed there. So looking forward, I heard some nice things from the mayor on our advocacy future with that, so that's great. I had a chance to attend the Animal Shelter Advisory Board, so you'll all be excited to hear about, coming forward. Soon, that will probably be bringing back that ordinance on Cox again. So that'll be, it's about a year ago since we've had that. That was exciting. But they are also hiring for the animal control. So if anyone's interested in that, be sure to apply. We got to tour the 988 facility, and that was really informative. My colleagues were there as well. And it's really neat what they, what they've been doing with that and the changeover. So it was very uplifting and promising. I wanted to say congratulations to John Trainer for his continued appointment. And then Chief Templeman, ah, with such sad news, but congratulations and sad to see you go. It has been very, very nice to work with you. You have been extremely accessible and wonderful to work with. And it's going to be hard to replace you. Lastly, comments on regarding the new project labor agreement ordinance. I wanted to say thank you to everyone that spoke and showed up today. And this is exactly the times that I love this job, when people stand up and speak their mind and come and tell us what their feelings are and flood our inboxes with, this is how we feel, this, this is what we want, this is what we think would be good for the community. We all thrive on that, so keep up that good work. And please keep giving us feedback and please keep participating in the whole civic process because that's really, really important. I'm super thrilled that the update that the mayor was, like, writing down notes with a lot of the feedback that we were getting. I, I want to make sure that while a lot of the suggestions were amazing, it's more than just the input that people give here, that stakeholder-ing process going forward. And one of the letters that was sent in had just some words that I thought were very kind of indicative of the problem with this process in particular. It had said that our concerns are both procedural and substantive in nature. The task force omitted two key stakeholders, the Snohomish and Island County Labor Council and the Northwest Washington Building and Construction Trades Council. Excluding both of those groups meant that the framework that you created, and while you can amend and edit things going forward, that initial framework is inherently problematic. So going forward, hopefully you can have the proper stakeholders. And bringing in one labor affiliate or, or, or one, you know, worker that's part of a union does not necessarily mean that they represent the voice of, of labor. And so going forward, I'm hoping that we can have the proper stakeholder-ing if we really want to create something that's actually going to not be anti-worker. So I, I'm hopeful in, in the results of what happened today and the direction that's going. And again, I just really appreciate you all taking the time to be here.
Thank you. Vice President Tuohy.
Yeah, I just have, I attended the Council of Neighborhood meeting on Monday night, and they had, the guest speaker was Ben Breeden, the Homeless Response Coordinator for the city. He gave a great presentation, and the audience was, you know, very interested, had lots of good questions. And Chief, I just need a little time to think about this. Because it's, it's been an honor. Thank you.
Councilmember Schwab.
Yeah, thank you for giving me another chance. It was a little. Yeah, the Viewage Madison Neighborhood Meeting, we, we met, and it was good, and there was a lot of discussion on trying to get the neighbors engaged. And, you know, I've spoken this before, it's so important. You know, our system of neighborhood groups is really in our city charter. So it's, it's a neat system, and I really find, I'm trying to find ways to encourage our neighbors to, to be a part of that system. It's, it's really important, and it's really effective. And I appreciate the mayor's staff. They're trying to do their best with their communications to work with that group. Also, I'll just make it public, and specifically in the little area that I live, the, it's probably been announced before, but I get a lot of questions over the Edgewater Bridge. And right now, it sounds like it's going to close, if I'm right there, right after the Muckletill School District gets out in, in June. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryan.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I have lengthy comments tonight. Thank you, everybody, for showing up tonight and sharing your voice. It's just so critical to hear from every single person in this room. I was glad to see that the ordinance, the PLA ordinance, was pulled tonight because the new version was a non-starter for me. I agree with commenters that we should go back to the original draft that was presented by Councilmember Vogel and use that as a starting block, not the latest draft that has wandered way too far from council's intent, the totality of labor's input, and what's best for our city. The process, as we have seen, was flawed, and the final work product is a reflection of that. I know that the work is not done yet, and I look forward to continued progression. Along the same vein, I had planned to wait until after the PLA work had concluded to make an announcement, but since it's ongoing and I don't want to wait any longer, I'd like to make an announcement that I'm working on a wage theft ordinance for the city. The ordinance would prohibit the city from entering into a contractual relationship with any entity that had knowingly engaged in wage theft. There's more to come from me, but many of you in this room will be hearing from me shortly. For other comments, I have, I'll start with my Neighborhood Association updates. Couple Mondays ago, I met with the Lowell Neighborhood, and it was a great turnout to hear the mayor's presentation. So glad to see lots of folks in the room there. The next night, I met with the Valley View Neighborhood at the, the South Precinct. They're getting started again with their neighborhood meetings. They meet the third Tuesday of every month, or most months, at the South Precinct at 7:00 PM. And they were also glad to hear the mayor, that the mayor had taken off the table the Woods Creek matter, so thank you for that. Yesterday, I attended the Pinehurst Beverly Park Neighborhood Association. And after 10 years of involvement with the Neighborhood Association, Chair Gary James will be retiring from participating, and they'll be holding elections in November for new Neighborhood Association leadership. Pinehurst Beverly Park meets the fourth Tuesday of the month. And starting next month and moving forward, their meeting location will be at the Boys and Girls Club at Lyons Park at 7:00 PM. A couple of the neighborhood meetings I've been to recently had a candidate running for office that was there. And so I just wanted to share a reminder that Neighborhood Association, Neighborhood associations are community groups and not a place for campaigning. I believe the policy is that both candidates, that both candidates running for a certain office need to be present to share more about their candidacy. And I did want to mention too, though, that the Neighborhood, the Council of Neighborhoods is hosting a candidate forum on October 16th at the Warehouser Room in Everett, so that folks can hear directly from many of the candidates that are going to be on their Everett ballot. Last week, I also attended the Downtown Everett Association Open House at their new location. And I'm proud to announce tonight and share that my first district ARPA allocation will be $25,000 to the Downtown Everett, Everett Association to support their storefront improvements program. Wednesday, the 20th, I virtually attended the White House Conference on Hunger Nutrition and Health Monthly Update Call. Since I hadn't been assigned to any regional committees for my council positions, I've taken the liberty of assigning myself to some. So it was great to hear about WIC programs and support that we can do to make sure that funding is there for women in inference in need. Today, I also attended the District and Municipal Court Judge Association's event, and it was great to hear more about the treatment court system and the work that our city and county are doing to administer restorative justice to so many people who are in need of a hand up. I guess, third from last, on my notes, the second to last, then I came up with a new one. I also toured the 988 Native Strong Crisis Call Center last Friday. Even though the call center is located off of 41st here in Everett, it's the call center for the entire state of Washington, minus Spokane and King Counties. The number of people experiencing a mental health crisis continues to climb, but please know that resources are available, and you are not alone. If you are experiencing a crisis or thoughts of suicide, or if you know somebody in your life who might be in a state of distress, you can call, text, or online chat 24/7 with somebody at 988. No crisis is too big or too small. And they also have specialized help for veterans, Spanish speakers, LPTQIA-plus youth, and Native Americans. Next week, I will be participating in the Week Without Driving, which is an event put on by Disability Rights Washington. And it's a challenge for folks who are willing to take it on to go an entire week without driving a vehicle. They are welcome to ride in a vehicle, but the purpose is to get around town by walking, by biking, strollering, or by bus. So I look forward to participating in that. It's a really great reminder of how important our transportation system is for people of all abilities. And in light of comments that were made earlier, I would like to mention that I am participating in a group called Communities Against Hate and Violence Extremism to address the concentration of hate groups in Snohomish County. This group is co-host for an educational event coming up on October 26th about the rise of white supremacy, featuring author David Newhart. And Chief Templeman, I don't, I don't know if I can do it tonight. I don't know if you have to officially submit your, a letter, and it has to be approved. So I'm wondering if we just don't approve it, if we maybe get to keep you around for a while. But it truly has been an honor, and the city's better off because of you. Thank you.
Thank you, and I don't have very many things to report. I wanted to thank our public commenters, who are the ones that were legitimate. And I am bewildered by the hate that comes from others. I appreciate very much Council Vice President Tuohy, and Councilmember Schwab, and the mayor, and your staff's work on the project labor agreement legislation. Look forward to seeing that come back forward for, with some revisions so that we can all understand where that needs to be. And Chief Templeman, I want to thank you very much for your service, for being the honest-upstanding man that you are, for always leveling with us on the good, the bad, and the ugly, and being very open and transparent. I've worked with three police chiefs in my years on city council. And I do very much appreciate the transparency that you brought to this office and willing and openness to looking at policing in different ways and just bringing us really into the modern realm of police administration. I do appreciate your service. We're all better off for that, and big shoes to fill there. So thank you for that. We'll enjoy our last month of working with you. That's all for me. Do we have an administrative update this evening?
Sure. So first, just a note that, thanks, Councilmember Fossey, for a question. And I sent some information to the full council about firefighter hiring information, including the past history of our authorized staffing levels, which actually had risen from 174 FTEs in 2018 to 188, I guess, as of 2022. We will work on some Zoom emergency protocols, exercising some old skills tonight, and hopefully prevent future disruptions. There's, there are, there's ways to manage that, so we'll, we'll figure it out. And then, let's see. Oh, Councilmember Ryan, thanks for mentioning the Week Without Driving. The mayor and I are both participating next week, so look forward to that experience. I've done it before in the past. And, you know, I, I bike a lot, so I'll keep doing that. But it is, you know, there's always different decisions that you make, so it's a good opportunity to, to do that, thinking about those, those that don't have the luxury of making those choices. And then, Councilmember Vogel, as noted, we'll get back to you with some of those answers. I know that at least one of the consultants that you mentioned, I'm not sure if we actually contracted with them. I think we had worked with them previously and just, you know, took a call with them to get feedback. Another one, I think we did probably have a contract, so we'll get more detail for you. And then my last note is just a thanks to the mayor for this role because it does allow us to be that level of responsiveness to the council and, and lots of other things that I get to do. And this is one part of the job, but I'm glad that the role that, that she reinstated is appreciated.
Thank you. And now we will move on to our city attorney. What do you have for us this evening, Mr. Hall?
I didn't think I'd have anything to say, but man, Dan, Chief Templeman, so well-kept secret, which is a good thing because if I had time to think about remarks, I'd talk for 20 minutes about you. But you know how much the legal department values the work we do with and for EPD, and how much I personally have appreciated working with and for you. The community owes you a huge debt of gratitude, and I will miss you immensely. Thank you. And there's no executive session.
Thank you. That brings us to our consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve the six consent items?
So moved.
Second, any questions or comments before we take the roll? Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilmembers Erlingo.
Yes.
Councilmember Vogel.
Yes.
Councilmember Fossey.
Yes.
Vice President Tuohy.
Yes.
Councilmember Schwab.
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan.
Yes.
Presidents, don't cipher.
Yes, and that brings us to the end of our agenda. With no further business, we are now adjourned.